All right, it is seven o'clock and in the essence of staying on time and not being here till midnight, we're going to go ahead and start the City Commission meeting with a pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Al, roll call.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Mybaum.
Here.
Minor.
Here.
Schram.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Mosier.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
All right, in your city packet, you had the minutes from our last regular meeting of June 14th, 2021, and needed an approval of minutes.
So moves.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other commission discussion? Anybody from the public? All those a favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right, approval of minutes. Before we go on to the City Managers' report, I want to share a date with all of you, and that date is March 9th, 2020. Can anybody guess the significance of a March 9th, 2020 date?
Is that the last?
No, that is the last time the City Commission sat all at this desk together. So, I was thinking about this morning, I'm like, I gotta go back, it's been a while, and March 9th, 2020 was the last City Commission meeting we had where everybody was sitting up front at the desk. So, it feels great to be back and to have everybody back up here for our City Commission meetings. So, I wanted to weave that in real quick before we get to the City Managers' report and to warn, most of you were in the room, but during City Manager Leon's report, we will be finishing the rest of the CIP or the capital improvement budget.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Mosier, members of the commission and public who are here. We'll finish up with the capital improvement plan, I'll try to be succinct there, and then get your direction on whether or not you want to meet again or discuss more after this meeting. And then I will have our Deputy Finance Officer Lisa Yardley give you an update on the American Rescue Plan, ARP, our status there. And Todd Larson will also provide you with an update on the Huether Family Aquatics Center. So, you guys, if you'll be ready to do that here as we get closer to the end of the CIP. We ended up on cemetery, and as you all know, we maintain the city cemetery. Chris Bornitz primarily is the contact there, does a beautiful job. Not a lot there to talk about, except general maintenance in equipment in 2022. In and out here, there is some funds for mausoleum slash crematorium, that's just one of those ideas that has been put out there to talk about with you in the future of maybe having some area or someplace, reflective place where folks can purchase an area for themselves or loved ones for cremains, as that's becoming a more popular choice for people when they pass. So, something for us to talk about and think about long-term. That's also another opportunity, maybe for a legacy gift, if there's somebody that's interested in making an investment in that cemetery, isn't technically a park, but that's certainly an area where we would welcome a partnership. Solid waste collection, we do have tractor replacement next year, and you can see in out years, we have more capital plan. One of the numbers that's highlighted is the 220,000, that's replacement of a compactor truck. For those of you who've been on the commission, you see that that's a little bit more than what we've typically spent on compactors. That would be a fully automated truck, so a truck that has a grabber and picks it up itself and, you know, puts it in. So, again, another one of those ways, we can look at technology to help our folks do their jobs more efficiently and more safely, really, in that regard. Now, we would still obviously need folks to help us out in our alleys, and we have many of them, but that's an out-year consideration. So, that's just a theme I want to keep bringing up to let you know that we're talking about that. Our joint powers, you can see, you know, we share in those costs, but we have a number of items next year that we need to look at. We're always continually replacing trailers, we run our trailers heavy and often, that's even more true in times where the economy's good, people throw more things away, too. So, that's especially occurring right now. We also have an upgrade to the floor in the transfer station, so the dump floor rehabilitation is scheduled also for next year. Fox Run Golf Course, we are no longer running Fox Run Golf Course. As the season comes to an end, it will be time for Todd and I and Al and Ross to visit with Great Life to determine their interest in renewing their lease, if you can believe this, for those of you who are on that committee, it's been three years already. So, it's amazing that the time goes by so quickly. You do see next year irrigation upgrade at 125,000. The irrigation is something that's been brought up to us by Great Life, but we've also known we need to make some, we need to make some adjustments to the irrigation. So, we have planned for that, we can talk through that. I'm thinking that that's something that, if we're not planning for it, that will be something that's discussed in the lease arrangement, so that's why I put that in 2022. Todd recommended we put it in 2022. SAC improvements, so you see in the prints there next to each item, our portion, so in many instances, we have 89% of the cost, and the school has 11% of the cost, in some cases, it's 50-50, in some cases, it's 60-40. Next year, there'll be some investment made, we always purchase new fitness equipment. We also need to look at roof replacements as well. There's also some smaller, smaller items such as cleaning and replacing the slide tower that's at the aquatics portion of the facility. So, what happens with this carpet replacement, for example, what happens with this is Al and Todd visit with the school staff and talk about upcoming plans and what really needs to get done for maintenance of the building. That building is used almost every day of the year, and it's getting to be to the point where it's really showing age, and so we need to start making upgrades and things of If we're ready to move on and there's no questions, we'll talk a little bit about the special capital improvement tax and some of the expenditures there. So, the items in blue are things that we budget for every year, items we budget for every year, so we can talk about areas of focus there, but we always know we have, for example, open asphalt concrete that we need to replace, permanent markings, you're going to talk about a permanent markings project for this year in your regular business. So, those things are budgeted annually. And then we have a number of street projects that we're focusing on for next year as well. So, let me just use my paper here to make sure I tell you correctly what we're planning. And Adam wants a lot of questions about all these, I know he was feeling like he didn't get to answer enough questions yet. Summit Street, 15th to 21st is planned for next year. 21st Street, Douglas to Mulberry, Whiting Drive, which was scheduled for this year, has been rescheduled for next year, Fertig to 13th. We also have West City Limits Road, 8th to 9th Street. And we have 5th Street, Green to Spruce. And I believe, Dwayne, was it 5th Street that we underbudgeted? Yes, so that's going to be, I had a little postie at one time, that's going to be in the amount of about 380,000, and we'll certainly fix that before we, you know, bring you a final version of this to look at. Commissioners, are you seeing any streets there on that list that you think are, need to be done in advance, or questions about those ones that were selected? Adam and Kyle work together to, you know, try to plan projects if we're going to replace, you know, a water main or something, that we're also taking a look at that street and seeing if that's time to be replaced as well.
If it's not tied to a water main fix or upgrade, is it just then the condition of the streets and how they get put in a ranking order?
I'll let Adam answer that, he wanted to answer questions anyway.
Yes, generally, so the street department does a ranking system every year, they actually survey all our streets every year, annually. So, we do have a ranking system in place, and then it kind of is a priority locations, too, you know, around schools or major thoroughfares, things like that, so.
So, these would be the ones with the highest ranking or the lowest ranking in that, how does that work?
It's not technically that easy, but, yes.
Sorry, Amy, one moment. Adam, are there any sidewalk improvements tied to any of these road reconstructions like we had in the past?
Yes, all of these will have sidewalk improvements tied to them, yep.
So, as part of our complete street program, we're not just looking at our active transportation plan in terms of putting in new sidewalk, but we're trying to plan our streets with the sidewalks and do a better job about that. One thing that ARP may allow us to do, or infrastructure monies may allow us to do, is either more local street projects or maybe some street projects that were previously solely tied to development that might now be tangible for us to perform. So, we don't know enough about the rules yet associated with all the funds that could be accessed, but we will be talking about and taking a look at that as we go forward. So, you all know what those projects are and street projects that we'd like to see done, but we've always said, well, development-driven, development-driven, and probably yes, but maybe that might even make our end of that project easier for us. Central garage, here is our last apartment, you see a little bit of investment next year in some smaller pieces of equipment, and then you see next year, we have some larger things planned with a fuel upgrade, fuel system upgrade, and some other pieces of equipment that are a little bit more expensive. But again, central garage is the area that takes care of all of our equipment and all of our cars. So, I'll let Lisa give you an update on the American Rescue Plan, where we are as the City of Yankton with that, while you're formulating your questions about the CIP, so we can make the best use of your time. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, thank you for having me tonight. The American Rescue Plan was enacted on March 11th of this year. It's basically allocating $65.2 million to the state of South Dakota for non-entitlement units for local government. So, we're considered an NEU because our population is under 50,000. So, based on that population, we're expecting $2.497 million. What we're expecting is, once the money comes from the Department of Treasury to the state of South Dakota, South Dakota has 30 days to give us the first trench. The first trench is expected to be half of that. So, I called the South Dakota Borough Finance and Management last Tuesday, and I spoke to a gentleman who gave me some answers, he didn't want to give me a lot, but he said the state is working with the Department of Treasury as far as a little bit more guidelines. They need a little bit more from the federal government about what they need to do. He did mention, we are a primary recipient for these federal funds. Compared to the CARES Act last year, we were sub-recipient of the state of South Dakota. So, there is a little bit more reporting, more reporting on our end, but the good thing is, we're getting the money upfront, and we have, the funds have to be obligated by December 31st of 2024, and that counts with projects to be completed by December 31st of 2026. So, we have a little bit more time on our hands than compared to the CARES Act. This isn't a reimbursed grant, this is a, we're having the funds, it's similar to a restricted fund, as Al and Amy were mentioning earlier. So, if it finds that we cannot, we did not spend the money on what it was restricted for specifically per the U.S. Department of Treasury guidelines, then we may have to return some of the money back. So, that's why we've mentioned, we have to be really careful about what we can spend and what we can't. So, some of the guidelines we have been told about, the majority of it is for infrastructure, water, sewer, major projects like that. There is a little bit where there's like broadband infrastructure, but there is limitations on zoning requirements. So, just like everything else, there's rules upon rules when you're dealing with federal grant money. And that's something we'll be doing a little bit more researching on and hoping to come up with a plan on in the next few years. We don't have to spend this within nine months, luckily.
So, the first distribution of that money comes out, when do you get then the second part of that, or is that when all the projects are complete, so there's money up front, or is that partway through?
The second trench is expected to be the second half, and that's a year from when we receive the first trench. Questions on the CIP or questions for Lisa and direction as to whether you think we need to meet again, or if you would like to continue feedback to staff directly, one-on-one, about thoughts, observations on the CIP.
Anybody want to meet again on this, or do you feel that you've gotten enough information for them to go back and readjust or with the feedback you've already given? I'm seeing a lot of head nodding, so I believe it's, you're good to go back.
All right, thank you. If you have not been to the Huether Family Aquatics Center yet, my question to you is, why not? And you are one of the only people in town. Todd, how's it going?
Good. That's the extent of the report, things are going good. So, I'll give you historic numbers, and then I'll give you this year's numbers, so you can make your own determination on how you think things are going. So, some numbers that are important to note from the past, five-year average for total attendance, month of June, the average daily attendance was 269 people. That five years would have been 2014 through 2018, because we were closed, or 2014 through 2019, when we were closed with the outdoor aquatic season last year. So, anyway, 269 daily in the past. Day pass sales this year, day pass sales average right now is 266 day passes a day. So, we are averaging what our total attendance used to be in day pass sales. Our highest day pass sales, we've been over 600 twice on June 5th and then June 19th, which were both Saturdays. Total attendance past years, our record from the data that I was able to find, 2012, we had 19,997, so 20,000 people came in the doors at the old Phantom Memorial Pool in 2012. We also got over 19,000 in 2017. There were a couple of years in the span when I've been here where we were down around 14,000 in a year. So, total attendance, 2012, 20,000 people. This data is through the 27th, so I don't have today's data in here, but through 627, our total attendance on the year is 25,150 people, we're averaging 900 people a day. If you would have thrown out this weekend, again, we had a swim meet going on, so we were advertising for people to know that the adventure pool was closed, hoping they wouldn't show up. And the weather on Saturday, we had our lowest attendance day on Saturday of 126 people on Saturday, again, remember cold and rainy, with the swim meet going on on Sunday and then the warmer temperatures, we had attendance of 531 people. Before this weekend, our lowest day of attendance was on 620, again, we had a cool cloudy day, so we only had 432 people come to the facility on that day. Two times this year, we've been over 1,200 people in a day. So, again, for putting things in perspective, attendance peak days in the past, 2018, we had one day where we had 647 people come in the door, that's peak attendance all summer long. 2015, we were over 600 once, 2011, we were over 600 once. In 2018, number of days over 503, 2017, number of days over 400 through that season, we had 11 days where we were over 400. So, now talk 2021, we've had two days where we've been under 500. We've got 26 days where we're over 500, again, with just a couple of days. Everything we're seeing is weather-based at this point. Again, going back to that 269-person daily average at the old pool, if you want to talk water walking, we've had two days, again, we don't specifically track water walking at 6:00 a.m. to, if it's during the week, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. check-ins, so swim team would be a part of that. So, think swim team, 10 or 15 people in their swimming laps in the morning, might have some adult swimming laps, the majority of these are water walkers. We've had two days where we've had over 170 people come in from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. So, we're doing business that looks like a normal day in the morning, if you think about the old pool on those days. So, numbers are pretty staggering. You want to talk concessions, we can talk gross sales. Our best year, again, when I first came to town, we didn't even do concessions. ABS was selling concessions at the facility, and then, because the sales weren't that great, got out of it. They used it as a business training tool. Anyway, we took over concessions, our best year for gross sales was in 2017 at $16,000, a little over $16,000 in 2017. Again, through June 27th, gross sales in the concessions, we're at $50,400. So, again, I didn't, I didn't write down what, I should have looked at total revenue, but just to give you an idea, so total deposits, total, well, yeah, forget total deposits. So, I gave you the concessions deposit at $50,400. Front desk deposits, which would be sales passes, goggles, sunscreen, front desk, anything but concessions. Our revenue right now, again, through June 27th, is just a little over $188,000. So, we're, we would love to see rain for a lot of different reasons, but looking at the forecast going into July, I, again, don't see any reason why this isn't going to change. And again, we've welcomed the cooler, slower weather, because our lifeguards, that first week and a half, their heads were spinning, it was busy, 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 busy. So, it's been good. Any questions? Goals, our goal is to sell 3,000 season passes, sorry, I forgot a good one. Season pass sales, again, not through today, but through two days ago, 3,685. As a part of that, we had the Guppy Grant set up, Boys and Girls Club, we've got 100 free Guppy Grant passes out right now, and we also have 122 passes out that the person paid $30 for, and the Guppy Grant will cover the other 37. So, about 222 Guppy Grants out, that would be included in that 3,685 season passes sold number. I think that was most of the data.
A true testament to build it, and they will come in full force. All right. Hey, so you kind of mentioned the first couple of weeks, head spinning, getting used to it, do you feel staff and folks and things have stabilized and you're starting to settle in and feeling comfortable with where things are going?
Yeah, and of course, that, the one stat I had in here, but I don't have all the data yet, is swimming lessons, we haven't even started talking about that, those started in the facility, too. So, not only in those morning, again, swimming lesson people don't check in, so those numbers don't skew, but swimming lessons have started. Before the season even began, we knew there was a lifeguard shortage, we saw that throughout the nation. A lot of that has to do with they've got to get certified, recertified every year, then you had the pandemic and facilities weren't open, so there was no jobs. So, we were prepared for that coming in, and we're worried, but we've done a good job recruiting, we've got good staff, we've, going to Google for more data, I can give you some more data off of Google with searches, but we're getting good reviews, and some of those reviews have talked about the number of lifeguards in the facility feeling safe, well-run facilities that way, so that's been good. We do, we have instituted a dollar raise in the month of July, so they'll work through the month of June. Those that stick with us, because that's what we want, we're trying to get retention, there'll be a dollar raise in the month of July, and then when they get into August, there'll be another dollar increase in pay. So, we're trying to reward those that stick with us through the year. We also created a bonus plan for the month of August, knowing how, again, going back before the season began, we've, in the past, struggled with swim lessons. And we have WSI, Water Safety Instructor, they teach lessons for us early in the year, and then as the year goes by, people don't want to teach swimming lessons. We had a bonus plan already set up to get people through the end of the year, the more you work, as you get into August, you're going to get a bonus. So, we had that in place. Now, we have a bonus just for lifeguarding, and really, it's for working in the facility, whether you're talking concessions or front desk or lifeguarding for the month of August, where if they work so many days, plus two days out of the three for riverboat days weekend. Again, there were some questions, you know, oh, the scheduling, and you've got so many guards, maybe we won't get there, and we'll work with people. We're not going to try to get people to work 13 days, so they don't get their bonus, because they needed to get to 14 days, and so we'll work with them that way, we don't think it's going to be a problem. But we have heard from some of the older kids that were starting to, either they're in college or going to go to college, that, you know, that's about the time, it's time to get to college and move in and think about those type of things, and they've said, because of the bonus system, we're going to stick around and work through riverboat days weekend. So, again, knock on wood, we're two months away from that, but it sounds like that's going to work, staffing's been good, front desk has been good, concessions, again, concessions, we would have better numbers if early in the year, we ran out of product, and so we had to work with some of our vendors that get us the product. She mentions Dippin' Dots, we don't sell Dippin' Dots, we sell whatever the other kind of ice cream is. They had to bring us more freezers, we've got two giant freezers in there, the icy machine doesn't work quite right, they fixed it twice. Again, when you think icy machines, and they're synonymous with gas stations and come-and-go gas stations, again, they might sell 10 icies in an hour, we have people walking up wanting 10 freezies for their family, or icies, I should say. So, just the amount of product we're trying to get through, Pizza Ranch has been great to work with, we haven't any problems on pizza. through. Pizza Ranch has been great to work with. We haven't any problems on pizza. Pretzels have been good. Again, supply running low, hot dogs have been good, we can keep up cooking those. Some of the cool stuff, we ran out of, we had a weekend without some ice cream stuff. So again, working with the vendors to get that taken care of. We've got enough freezer space, but yeah, things, things were overwhelming those first couple of weeks, but we're, we're hoping as we get into July and the hot weather's going to continue, we're going to be smooth sailing, but I'm sure there'll be some hiccups along the way.
Well, thank you, Todd, and, and I guess that worked. I mean, good, good job for everyone involved in there, but we should take just a beat and, and recognize all the community support, the community effort, all the commission's hard work, the staff's hard work, the community's contribution, donors' contributions, the Huthers' contributions. Stockwell, you built us a beautiful facility. That'll be part of our community for a very long time. We're all very proud of it. It's so wonderful for me. It sends, just chills up my spine when I walk by and I hear kids laughing and squealing and screaming, and it's just wonderful. You built a place, you really fulfilled the mission of the city of Yankton with this project, so you should really all be very proud of yourselves and feel good about everyone using that facility. Brittany LaCroix and Todd gave you all t-shirts, the Huthers Family Aquatics t-shirt. So all the commissioners have those. I believe those are on sale. Is that correct?
We have some different ones that are for sale at the facility.
There are t-shirts for sale. I have a couple, I guess these are limited edition. I have a couple of different sizes here for, I think I have a medium, a large, an extra, a large, and XX large, if somebody wants them. So that's a very cool t-shirt to have and to wear proudly when you're going to the Aquatic Center. So please check it out if you haven't already. We are tracking zip codes, so the next update that you will get will likely be some comments people are making about the facility and maybe some things that we're making adjustments to, as well as where are people coming from? Because we know they're coming from a lot further away than just Yankton, and we want to track that. So we know next year where we should be advertising, or where we don't need to advertise, because they'll come anyway, you know? So that'll be good information to have as well. So Ross would like to add something.
I just wanted to thank you and your staff. I have got a kiddo that's on the swim team and the meet this weekend, and all of the setup and the unknowns and the uncertainty with the new pool, your staff could not have been better to work with. And the compliments we got from all of the participating families from the other communities were overwhelming. So, great job. That pool was phenomenal for a swim meet.
Can I ask one more question as well? So I can't remember, did we have projections on what we expected for attendance back when we were developing the pool? Can we say we're exceeding those projections or?
So again, the, the goal was 3,680, or sorry, the goal was 3,000 season passes sold. On the daily pass side, looking at average, sorry, looking at revenue, again, with the budget that we put in, it was changed a little bit, but I was basing the budget on daily pass sales for the entire year of 15,400. Currently, we are at 7,500. So we're halfway to that point. Again, being over the goal of season pass sales generates more revenue. So, so that's a good, good point. But again, right now, we are tracking that we are going to surpass that daily pass number of 15,400. And again, the weekends, looking at weekends, 600 daily passes, 461 daily passes, 458 daily passes, 378 daily passes, then we were to June 19th, 601, and then we had a cool and cloudy day. So again, if we get over 400 daily passes on weekends, yeah, we, we should get to those marks.
We do have to, I've been around Al long enough, we have to also think about our expenses. You know, we're going to have a big irrigation bill. There's expense in, in he, it's a heated pool, so, you know, and we also know that things are more expensive than when we first set out, just operationally, you know, we're going to have some increases that we probably didn't maybe anticipate. So we'll see where it all shakes out, but we are in very good condition. I mean, people are using the facility and the hot weather has worked in our favor.
One more thing I got to touch on, because otherwise Brittany's going to kick me, is Saturday mornings now, starting this, July 3rd, so July 3rd, July 10, July 17, July 24, and July 23, we have Saturday, Kids in the Park on Saturday mornings. Again, as we built this facility, knowing Ribfest was in the park at one time and seeing that success, I had made some comments to Brittany about, you know, those events and how great that park is set up to do things like that. Now we have an aquatics facility, not knowing how, and always worried about, boy, what if we build it and they don't come? We talked about trying to have something for just kids, not adult entertainment slash kid entertainment, but just kid entertainment. Can we utilize that park? Can we get people to our aquatics facility by having an event? Thus created Kids in the Park, Saturday mornings, 9:30 AM, or 9:30 AM to 11:30 AM. So when that event is over, the doors of the aquatic facility opens. Again, I'm out of the mix of who to book for those type of things. That's all Brittany LaCroix. And this first group that we're having this weekend is Cuckoo Kangaroo out of Minneapolis. Again, my kids are just old enough that I don't talk to them about that kind of music. Today, when I was in the waiting room, waiting to see the doctor for my daughter's broken arm, my wife, we, actually, we were in the exam room, my wife and two kids were dancing to YouTube Cuckoo Kangaroo because they know it from daycare, they know it from elementary school, they know it from Go Noodle. Anyway, little kids know who Cuckoo Kangaroo is. So it's a big deal. She's mentioned it before. Eventually, we're going to have a Grammy, a Latin Grammy-winning band in the Lucky Band there on a Saturday morning, working with connecting cultures. So again, we're hoping on Saturday mornings, we're going to have a great event in the park before we open the doors to the Aquatic Center, and it just makes that Aquatic Center, again, they just go hand in hand. And it's, we hope they're both going to attract people for both reasons on both sides. So we're hoping for good attendance there too.
Okay, thank you very much, Todd. We're excited, as you can all tell. I've also seen people that don't actually go into the water when they go water walking, they just sit on lounge chair and read a book. So you don't, people are enjoying it just for being next to water, which is kind of neat, too. Speaking of t-shirts, I'm going to be getting you all another t-shirt. Maybe some of you saw, meant, some, some of you attended, and many of you saw the new Yankton Thrive logo. It's pretty cool. I was going to bring my t-shirt, but it, it has chocolate stain on it as well as sunscreen, because that's my shirt that I wear to the pool. But it's really a cool shirt, and so it has a new logo. We're going to be a part of Yankton Thrive in a big way, and so I'm, be proud for you guys to, to wear that around as well. So Colleen will be getting sizes, and we'll be getting you those as well. So we'll have, we'll be all ready for summer with new summer gear. Our new police chief is in the audience tonight. Incoming Chief Foot will be taking over here before your next commission meeting, so you all know him, and we're excited for his leadership. Just Chief John Harris will be having a retirement party the afternoon of Friday, July 9. Commission will be invited to that. I'm sure there'll be an announcement as well on that. So I'm saying that out loud so the press knows that we'll be getting together, not to talk about city business, but to have fun, to say goodbye to John, and to welcome Chief Foot into leadership here and part of our leadership team. Questions you have for me? Otherwise, we haven't even started your regular business yet. Okay, we're just excited. We're having a good summer. We're really proud of all our staff and, and everyone that's helped make the aquatics facility a reality. So thank you for letting us brag a little bit.
All right. I do, before we turn to public appearances, want to thank City Manager Leon and her department heads for all the time that they put in. I know we spoke a lot tonight about fund. I always want to make sure I enunciate the D, because I keep hearing fun sources. Some of it's fun, but our fun sources and, and the work they put into the CIP to present to the City Commission. And in particular, before, if Lisa's going to try to sneak out of here, our thanks on behalf of the City Commission. I know you've put a lot of hours and time into monitoring the CARES Act money for us, and now I'm sure going to be putting a lot of money into the ARP. So thank you. I've heard your lights been on late at night getting through all of that. So again, thanks to City Manager Leon, the department heads, and all the work they're doing for us to run the city business. With that, I will ask if there's anybody here from the public who would like to make an appearance in front of the City Commission on an item not on the agenda tonight. All right, seeing no movement, we will head into the consent agenda items. I believe we have one, and that is to establish July 12, 2021, as the date for a public hearing on the request for a transfer of ownership of a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine for July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2022, for Anis Properties, doing business as Patriot Express, to Israel Marteco. I'm going to apologize ahead of time if that's wrong. Doing business as Shapiro's Tacos at 100 East 4th Street in Yankton, South Dakota. What is your pleasure? Aye, it's a consent agenda. Can I have a motion to move the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. And any abstaining. All right. There is no old business on the agenda for tonight, so we are moving on to new business. And item number one under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-138 regarding a grant agreement for the recipient of the Coronavirus Response and Relief Appropriation Act funds at the Chan Gurnee Municipal Airport. This is for $13,000. It's been awarded to the city, and this would give permission for City Manager Leon to sign the grant agreement. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. I don't know, Amy or Amy, do you have any thoughts on this to share with the commission?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission. We received, City of Yankton received as part of the Federal Aviation Award, $13,000 in Coronavirus Response Relief Appropriations Act to use at the Chan Gurnee Municipal Airport. And those funds were awarded to help offset the financial impacts implications regarding the pandemic. Obviously, we had very little traffic in 2020, which meant very little revenue, and we also had to respond in terms of sanitation and some PPE and things of that nature.
Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public like to make a comment on this agenda item? All right, Al, roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Agenda, new business agenda item two is a bid award in consideration of memorandum 21-139 regarding the 2021-22 annual supply of petroleum and transport tank wagon petroleum products. Low bidder is Gerson Oil. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public like to comment? Al, roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number three is consideration of memorandum 21-140 regarding a bid award for the cold applied plastic pavement marking installation project to Traffic Solutions in the amount of $49,817.40. This is for marking the pavement on West City Limits Road from Gulf Lane to Highway 50, and includes three crosswalks. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any committee, commission discussion?
Probably, a question would be for Adam. I'm curious to understand the process, if this is maybe something that we're going to continue to rely on in years ahead. And also, what kind of cost savings are we looking at, maybe in the long term, by transitioning to this type of pavement marking?
So this pavement marking is made to last probably 10 years. You can get out of it, and it's, we found it to be pretty durable on, on streets like West City Limits Road, where it's a lot of stray traffic, you know, and, and they, they do groove this product down, so our plows won't peel it off. It works well on concrete streets. I don't have an exact cost savings versus painting the stripes every year like we traditionally do on, on our painted streets. So, but yeah, this should have a 10-year life, maybe even longer if it's, if it holds up well, so.
Have we been, we've been using this process for more than a decade, probably, haven't we?
Yes, we've used this on a lot of streets, yes.
Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public like to make a comment on this agenda item? Al, roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number four under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-135 and resolution 21-53, which is a plot review for Deborah M. Specht and Daniel L. Specht, members of Mona's LLC owner, address is the south side of the 600 block of East 4th Street, which is down on the corner of 4th Street and Burley. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? I see Dave at the mic. Dave, did you want to describe anything, any tech? Okay. I don't know if he had anything or shattering to share to the motion. Okay. No commission?
What action is planned for this property, Dave?
So this is a subdivision of, of the block, and it's going to be done in phases. So you previously approved three tracks in the northeast corner of this, in this block, and those three sites are already occupied with, with buildings. This is just a continuation of the phased build out of that block. You'll see probably two or three, well, one, one or two more of these phased plots coming in the future, but we'll let the private developer make their announcements as, as that timing works for them.
And don't mean to spoil it, but this was also a unanimous approval from the planning commission?
True.
Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public like to make comment on this agenda item? They're all happy in their seats. Al, roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Abstain association.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number five is consideration of memorandum 21-136 regarding resolution 21-54, which is for a plot at White Tail Run. Dennis L. Christiansen, president, Deerfield Truck and Equipment Company owner, and the location is the north side of the 3,900 block of Buck Street. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Would anybody in the public like to make a comment? Al, roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number six is consideration of memorandum 21-137 regarding resolution 21-55, which is an annexation of the identified parcels out by Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health Services and the City of Yankton as owners. The location is the north side of the 900 and 1,000 blocks of West 31st Street. Dave, did you kind of want to maybe explain what this is for the public and the commission before we take a motion?
Sure. As, as most of you know, annexations, when they're voluntary petitions by the owner, are, are quite simple for communities to, to move forward with by passage of a basic resolution. In this case, the city is a substantial owner out there, so your, your, part of your action you're considering tonight is authorizing the mayor to sign the petition from the city to petition for the annexation of the property that, that you acquired in the lease agreement with the soccer association. So this is north of the old cemetery area, west of Spruce Street out there. If you were out there in the last few weeks, you saw the National Guard doing some training exercises and things out there. So it's a future development property that, at a future date, we'll be talking to you about putting an RFP together, maybe to solicit development proposals for it. Included with that is also Lewis and Clark complex out there, a residential complex out there already, and they wish to be annexed and have also petitioned as a landowner. And there are actually registered voters that also live in that complex, so they've also submitted a valid petition signed by not less than 75% of the registered voters that reside in that, in that area. So fairly basic annexation of property adjacent to the corporate limits with future development proposals yet to be announced. And I know Dr. Stanich is here from Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health, if you have any questions for him.
Dave, you might know the answer to this. Remind me, who serve, services that property with water?
So, the current structure that's there and the connection that's there is, it receives city service. The future development proposals area is in BY Waters, the Water Service jurisdiction based on the consent decree.
All right, hearing from Mr. Mingo, what is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more commission discussion? All right, anybody from the public like to make a comment on this? Al, roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number seven under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-141 regarding resolution 21-56 for a conditional use permit for a self-storage facility in a B2 highway business district out by Airport Agur's addition in the City of Yankton. Johansson Contracting, Inc. is the applicant, and the address is 2913 Piper Street. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the city commission? Would anybody in the public like to make a comment? Al, roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Number eight under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-142 for an introduction, first reading, and established July 12th, 2021, as the date for the public hearing to consider ordinance 1053 and ordinance adopting provisions for administrative approval of plats pursuant to South Dakota codified law 11-3-6.
Introduced.
Thank you. Number nine, kennel license fee is consideration of memorandum 21-143 regarding resolution 21-57 establishing a kennel license fee. The memorandum is to move that from $10 application fee to $150 application fee to cover the costs of, of those licenses. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. City Manager Leon, do you want to kind of cover why the request?
Sure, the reason for the increase in the costs is the commission will remember that we've, I guess, made our kennel inspection ordinance and our kennel ordinance more robust with the help of our city attorney, so we'll be doing more physical inspection of those kennels and businesses that fall under the kennel license. We'll actually be having our police department with the help of our community services officer doing full inspections and making reports, and so we're looking to recoup some of the administrative costs there for the kennel license renewal fee.
Any questions from the city commission? Anybody in the public like to make a comment? Roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number 10 is consideration of memorandum 21-144 regarding the Ald Brokaw Trail and Marne Creek Bank Restoration Scope Amendment with Banner Associates. It's for amendment number one to add $60,035 to the already agreed-upon contract. City Manager Leon, would you like to walk us through this before we ask for a motion?
I would love to share that power and give that to Adam Haberman, who, if I start talking about that, I'll be way out of my element, so.
Yes, so, as you know, last, towards the end of last summer, we selected Banner Engineering to be the engineer on this project. We contracted with them. They've, they've been working on, they did the survey, they've, you know, looked at all the damages. We've also met with FEMA and the state officials a lot on the direction this project needs to go and what, how it needs to be put together and packaged, which hasn't been a quick process by any means, I'll tell you that. As the projects developed, it's, it's moved past a certain threshold that requires additional environmental analysis, and that's the point we're at right now. Banner is here today, too, if we have any technical questions or explanations on, on those things, but it's still moving along. Like I said, it's not a very fast process. We've met a lot of FEMA officials through this, from all over the place, and trying to find the right people to ask certain questions, too, sometimes takes a little longer than, than what we'd like, but the state's been very good to work with in helping us get answers as well. We're hoping to have something to put out for, to bid this fall, but with this new environmental process, it could take, add an extra 12 months. And this has to be done in a certain sequence with the, with the design of the project, otherwise we have to start, FEMA has told us, we will have to start completely over in the process, and we don't want that to happen. So we'll take it step by step and assemble it in the right order, keeping in contact with state and FEMA to make sure we're doing that right. But the project is coming along, so hopefully, you know, hopefully the, the process doesn't take the 12 months and it's a quicker process, and we can get, get a contract put out, put in place soon, but that's kind of where we're at.
So the, the direction this project is heading, when we, the finished product, are we gonna, is it going to be similar to the trail that was in place, or is it going to be vastly different from what we had in the past?
As far as trail location, or?
Yeah, and is it going to go?
It'll be in the general same area. There's no plans to move it far, way far away from the creek. And there's different bank stabilization techniques that Banner's been working on, not just using riprap all the way up the sides, all the whole way. It'll be, you know, there's, there's some, some riprap with vegetative cover and different, different features, so it's, hopefully in the end, it's something that looks good as well as functions well to protect the creek, so.
Will this include any work more on the north end, where we see maybe improvements that will prevent flooding in the future, or is this just on the, the damaged areas to the south?
This is just strictly on the damaged areas.
So what we're trying to put together, we'll put a trail back in there?
Yes.
For sure.
Yes.
All right, after hearing that explanation, what is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion from the city commission?
Definitely appreciate the patience of Adam and team, the folks at Banner, state officials as well. There's ever an, a federal entity that needs a complete rehab and is a complete oxymoron, when you think about their name, it's FEMA. I mean, we're talking about an emergency that happened years ago, and, and again, I appreciate the patience of all the talented folks involved, and especially the level-headedness. If I was in your position, I would not have behaved the same way, so thank you. I know there's millions of dollars on the line, so it is probably worth the wait.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion or comments? Anybody in the public like to make a comment? Al, roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number 11 is consideration of memorandum 21-145 and resolution 21-58 regarding medical marijuana fees, setting the non-refundable application fee at $1,500 and the annual renewal fee at $3,000. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Ross, this is what we had in the ordinance that we passed, correct? This is, there's no changes here? This is just making?
This is just implementing the resolution that was proposed back in the work sessions. That's correct. The, the ordinance itself just gives authorization to the commission to set those fees by resolution, so that's what you guys are doing here.
Thank you. Anybody in the public like to make a comment on this? Al, roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number 12 is consideration of memorandum 21-134 regarding medical marijuana in the City of Yankton Personnel Manual and Collective Bargaining Agreement, and I am going to ask City Manager Leon just to make a few comments on what exactly this motion entails.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission. So, as you know, we're going to very shortly have medical marijuana become legal and go into effect in our state, and while the state's still working out how that's going to look, you have taken a step ahead of them and have moved forward with already passing an ordinance by which to regulate medical marijuana. Because we know that folks that we employ may utilize medical marijuana to treat ailments that they may have, we want to make sure that we're addressing it in our city personnel policy manual. So, you know, one of the things that's important to remember, and our human resources director is here tonight, if you have more questions or would like to get into detail, but we don't condone that anybody's impaired any time, of course, under any type of drug, whether it be illegal, legal for medical use, or prescribed to you. If you're impaired, you know, to the point where you cannot function and perform your job, we certainly don't condone that, and that's a cause for disciplinary action up to and including termination. However, in the case of, of medical marijuana, because it's something new in our state, we do have a little bit of an interesting twist on it in the sense that those folks that have commercial driver's licenses or CDLs to operate heavy equipment, there's a zero tolerance there. We have some positions such as our police department where we have a zero tolerance, and we also know because of the nature of marijuana and how it works, you might be able, you might have it in your system and be legally authorized to use it and have it in your system at work, but not be impaired as it stays in the, the blood system for a time after it's gone into effect. That's what I understand. So we need to make provisions in our policy manual so that if somebody is under suspicion or there's reasons to believe they're impaired, or they just get drawn for random, and they end up having a positive test for marijuana or the THC metabolic that if they produce their, I don't think it's called prescription card, but they produce their card or their license to use it, then they would not face, you know, disciplinary action. Now, if we get to the point of recreational marijuana, we'll have other conversation, definitely, but that's where we're headed today. So if you have more detailed questions, as I said, Cor Prospersal is here from our Human Resources and Community Engagement Department.
Are there other questions related to this, or would somebody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion from the city commission? Anybody in the public like to make a comment? Al, roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number 13 under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-123 and resolution 21-50 regarding a request by Mount Marty University for special events parking, parking ordinance, number 933, to be in place during the Lancer Homecoming Parade. It's a street closure from Third Street, for Third Street from Cedar to Burley from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM on Saturday, October 16th. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? All right, I'm not letting her off the hook that easy. Shannon's here from Mount Marty University. Would you like to stand up? Or you're gonna, she's delegating somebody else. I'd love to hear a few details. First-ever homecoming parade, that's during football, so if you want to give us a few details of what you've kind of sketched in, that'd be great. It's, it's on, it just takes a second. If you could give us your name, too.
My name is Johanna Jablonsky. I'm the Director of Alumni at Mount Marty. I just started in January, so we're very excited for Lancer Days this fall, so it's October 15th through the 17th. And so on Saturday, there will be a Lancer Days Parade downtown, and we are also working on tailgating, which will actually start September 4th. That is our first home game. Trying to think of some other exciting details, but we will have a schedule out soon for everyone to see, so you can get excited about all those events, but we're looking forward to the parade. We're hoping it'll be a Mount Marty and community event.
All right. Thank you, and welcome. Excited to have you here in our community, all the way from DC. Correct? Yes. We're happy to steal you from Senator Thune. Any other commission discussion? Would anybody in the public like to make a comment? Al, roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Abstain board associations.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Oh. I'm sorry.
Wait, I'm like, aren't you gonna vote?
We switched mayors, I apologize. Mayor Moser, I, I caught you, though.
I was, I didn't hear my name. All right. Aye, motion carries. Let's have a parade. All right, I do want to, before moving on to adjournment into executive session, just bring up something I've been thinking about, and it's related back to, I would say, agenda number eight, where we asked the commission to put some, together some paperwork to give city staff the ability to approve some simple plot reviews, so it doesn't have to take so long to get through city commission. Wondering if there's interest from the city commission to do the same for street closures and special events, open containers, when there are simple, street closures like this for businesses and, and events in our community, giving permission likewise to ask city Denherter, city attorney Denherter to work with city staff to put something together similar to number eight in reference to special parking permits and open containers.
When's the last time we've turned down one of these requests?
I, I mean, I've only been on for a few years, but we've never done one.
The only time it's happened is if there, if people hadn't been notified properly. I, I remember one instance of that, but otherwise, pretty routine. I can think of some alcohol license changes I'd love to see, too.
I know, City Manager Leon, do you have kind of some thoughts that related to that, like maybe if it's contentious, or do you see these as just simple ones, or how would you do it?
So this works really well when we have groups like Mount Marty, or groups that have repeat events, and we know they're coming, they know they're coming, they work with Brittany, and that works well. It is a little extra, you know, length for folks that are coming to the meeting for something that you probably, they have to check all the boxes before we put it on the agenda anyway that they've been notified, people, et cetera. Where it's tough is like if somebody wants to do a block party, and it's, you know, it's a five-week month, they don't have time to do, to have their open container, or they want to, you know, have special, no parking on the alley or something for an evening. Technically, they're supposed to go through this process. You know, you tell them no because they're not following the process and you don't like fun, but to tell them yes is technically not legal, so I'm not going to tell you what I've done, but I just, you know, as long as the commission and the, and the city manager, commission and city attorney, commission and finance officer have good communication and open, open communication and trust between them, this works really well. If it's something that wouldn't work for this commission or future commission, they could always rescind it and go back to you having the authority doing that. I think our staff is a pretty good indication of, you know, what might be a controversial item or what might not fit the bill for closing a street or allowing an open container.
And I also envision such an ordinance to have sort of a similar appellate process to other licenses and requests, where if for whatever reason staff didn't feel like an event, checked all of the boxes, but they were still adamant that they wanted to, you know, proceed, it could still be brought before this commission, and then you could guys give it, give it the attention that it would deserve.
All right, unless anybody disagrees, are you okay with giving direction to City Manager Leon and City Attorney Denherter to draft something to bring to the commission? Perfect, thank you. With that, we have exhausted our new business, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session.
So moved. Second.
Having a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? And anybody abstaining? All right, we will adjourn into executive session.